The child is unemployed. The child is not getting any disability grant. The parent cannot leave the child and go and look for work so that he can, she can earn an income and support the child. What happens that the parent now is remaining at home looking after this child who is disabled. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I would like to appeal to the participants to, at least to make sure that we are brief, we go straight to the point. I'd like to appreciate the opportunity that I am given. Greetings to everybody who is in attendance. My name is Nandi Sa April from NU2 in Tanzania.
From ward 14.
Ward 14 is my ward. The legal that I would like to request from the panel. I am appealing to government to intervene because we are having a problem or challenge of our children who are abusing drugs. I live in an area where there are a lot of children. In our area, we are really struggling because we are unemployed. There are these young children that normally visit our homes. Now, we, out of the feeling, we feel that the legal that we have, we do share it with them because they have nothing. What is happening is that the parents who are accessing the grant for these children, they are not utilizing the grant to benefit these children. I would like to check whether is there any provision that can be made for the children who do not have parents so that they can be kept in a particular center and even those who are given a foster, fostering by other parents, but they are not giving them the grant. If those children, they can be taken to a center where they can be given the proper care that they deserve. For example, I've got a child who is about 18 years old, who is in my neighborhood. From my assessment, I could feel that this child is a slow learner. Now, this child is due to go for the initiation school. The condition is very bad because they are living in a childhood at home. We'll find that another one is trying by all means to make ends meet. We'll find that now the assistance that the child applied for expires because, because the child now has reached the age of 18. Then, at least you must take these issues in your heart. At least we will help if we can have those homes that can look after these offenders. Because we do have empathy by taking those children, but we don't have enough to share with them because we are also not self-supporting, even in our own cases. Thank you very much. I fully support the bill. Greetings to everybody. Let me indicate that I fully support the bill. My name is Baba Luamkaaji. I work at the ECDC. I am representing all the ECDC. And also our villages around. We have a challenge that relates to the municipality. We, those that have been given sites, but we don't get the titles from the municipality. Even those that are given the sites, but the bills that are coming from the municipality, they are very huge in terms of rates. While we have nothing, we are really struggling. We are appealing to the municipality to at least reduce our debts. We do not have enough infrastructure, most of us. There are restrictions, especially during the COVID-19 period because there is a limited number that we are allowed to accept. But now, a lot of children end up staying in those township or locations because we cannot exceed the limit that we are given due to COVID-19 restrictions. I will address, I will lift the challenge or, I'm making myself as an example. I am in the Nisa Cottage. That is, I've got, I'm accommodated in a cottage, in a school. There is a space close above which is about 9600, which is not occupied. I applied for the space two times. I'm told that it is only a pole. That is, that land, that piece of land is allocated for a pole. There is no pole there. I've been in that space for quite some time. There is a person who is buying those scrap metals closer to Mkaaji. There are people who are busy with activities that relates to the scrap metals while we do have children that are around in that area. It is affecting us. I'm appealing to, please give us that piece of land so that we can utilize it. Thank you very much.
Parliament members, community members, I greet you all.
Um, Pumeza Ngesi from Tanzania, ward 17.
I support the bill. I want to add that the social development and our municipality.
But we don't ask ourselves why.
We have children of nine to 13 years who are dropouts. When you try to check with is there people who can support them at home when doing their homeworks? If they don't get somebody to assist them in doing their homeworks, they are afraid to go back to school without having done their homework. I think all of us, we are here with one reason that we want to see our children developing. I would suggest that the social development can maybe come to assist us in the sense that they open a center which can accommodate the different areas. A center that will be maybe in the middle of different areas where people, children can go and get people who would assist them with, when doing their homeworks. Because I, as an adult, um, done, um, born into one of them. And also, I think we can also have a way of teaching our children have a kind of workshops, maybe twice a week, where we would sit with children, teach them about child pregnancy and teach them about drug abuse and what the consequences of drug abuse could be. I therefore request that we work hand in hand with the social development to assist in developing our children. Because even now, you see our children, the children of nine, 12 years, would be roaming around in a highway during school hours. At least if you can join hand in hand in assisting one another to develop our children. In the process of developing our children, we can also introduce a kind of developing sport at the same time and keep them away from the streets. Because many times, children are becoming rape victims, that is, girl children. It's because they have nothing to do, they end up roaming around the streets because they have no activity that they can keep them busy.
Thank you. I fully support the bill.
I fully support the bill. Greetings to the honourable members. And everybody present here. All of us, I think, have witnessed on the news a woman who was hired, a woman from South Africa. Why this woman was asked to look after a child. Let's now assume that woman has been given the authority or permission to take the child along wherever the woman is going, let's say, for instance, in other parts of Africa. Just imagine the kind of abuse that would be given to the child or the child would be receiving from that woman. That is my input. I've indicated people who have issues, who want to raise issues that need some follow-up, they should rather go to the table so that we have people who want, who wants to make input into the bill here behind the mic. If you see me raising my mic, you must know that your time is up. Thank you. Greetings to everybody present here. I'm Nondembe Komise from King Williamstown.
Ward 25.
Ward 25. I support the bill. I'm not going to make input into the bill, but I want to raise an issue to the panel that there are children who are at the age that allows them now, that they can speak for themselves, but there are children who are being abused at the age of five years. For example, our children, who are the young blood, are raised by our grandmothers. As our children are depending on a grant or are living on a foster care, the mothers of these, these children are abusing their grandmothers. When the grandmother goes to lay a charge against the one who has ill-treated or assaulted her, she'll be told that she has no right of taking a child from her biological mother. I wish that be taken note of. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Greetings to everybody. I support the bill. Especially the clauses that refers to initiation of females and also the foster marriages, or first marriages. I want us to take note, pay attention to the age, issue of age. If you have noted, many of the speakers before me has arranged the age limit of children to be in a home and so forth. I'll be glad if you can have maybe a provision that says a child who is kept in a home can only be released when the child is good enough to be self-sufficient or if the child has, get an alternative home before getting released. The reason I say so, most of us, especially we as African, it's very, very rare that a child of 18 years has already went beyond grade 12. And lastly, the issue of the age restriction. I would suggest that children who are...
Using drugs.
Using drugs and are addicted to drugs whilst they are below 18, they should be forcefully taken into a rehab. Thank you. Greetings to everybody in the panel. And the committee members as well. I'm Nomvius Madla from ward 14. I'm here about a child in school. This child is disabled. This child is my sister's child, who is 13 years and staying with me. This child doesn't get to school. The parents of the child, that is the mother and the father, have been several times to Chubisana. They've been promised year after year without getting a school and even this year, they said, they said the child is on the waiting list, but still the child has not been accommodated at school. That child is very bright and has got good memory. If you get into the house, she'll say this is so and so. And if she, she doesn't know your name, but knows your face, she'll give you a nickname. And that child is very bright and can even count to ten, but the child has never been to school. The only problem is that the child should be taken to school. What should I do to get a school for this child? We will get the answers session before we close the program. We have the social workers, they are listening and we also, even you, the committee members, some of you do have the answers on the issues that have been raised here. You will get the response. Thank you.
Um, and police, if we, parliament, and escort us out.
Greetings to the panel and the honourable members of parliament. I'm Amanda Kjopoe.
From ISBND project, at Danken.
I am from ISBND project. Project in Danken Village, at ward one. I'll have just raised two points that we'd like to be assisted with and after that I'll take my seat. We, I am one of the youth and child, child and youth care workers. I request that we, as these practitioners, we be granted full authority or powers of removing a child if we found a child in a situation that is not suitable. We should have the same authority as the social workers or the police or working hand in hand with the social workers and the police. And on the issue of foster care grant, like the previous speakers before me indicated, the issue of age when it comes to education, especially for us black children, it's very rare that a child of age of 22 has at least managed to find employment or be self-sufficient. I therefore request that the age limit of 22 years for the child, the foster child care grant be at least, be raised, the age limit should be raised, be beyond 22. Greetings to the members of parliament. I'm Nomfundo Tokwe from ward one, child and youth care worker from ISBND project. I support the bill. Where I'm seeing we have a challenge of our children who are dropouts from the age of nine upwards. As we are mixed community members, where we are staying, we are mixed with the colored community and the drugs are roaming the streets. It's easy to get access to drugs. So where our children drop out from school at the age of nine, so I really wish that we should have a center that is meant to cater for those children who are dropouts.
Apo basa ukasukwete shakonis, kisnaba yeges kolo pakati, unapumenento esani.
Whether you would be maybe trained on, or given, or armed with skills to do some kind of hand practices, so that if the child cannot go to school, must have something else to do.
Oko esbini, nagokabela, sines tala, sales and rehabs as free, because by baby kona abantuana.
And lastly, we request that we should have, have, have access free of charge to rehabs, because we do have children who need, die need to offer rehab.
Nga kona abantuana ba funa yokuzyekitrag, taseteleo nabu, ba ngabinana ndawo zukuyu, kuba eya ndawo zehabs, funima, engos.
We do have children who are willing to quit the drugs after we have consulted with them, but the problem is to have access to the rehab, because the rehab centers we have need some kind of payment.
Ma nbulisefu i parlamenten, kumalu ngokoyo apa, eh, tingu Bishop Elsfohlo, suaka what fifteen.
Greetings to the members of parliament, I'm Bishop, what else?
Elsfohlo.
Elsfohlo from what fifteen.
Eh, dipuma kui association, eh, national Zionist National Report of South Africa.
I'm from that association.
National Zionist National Report of South Africa. Ndingu Deputy Secretary, paya kui association. Mna ndizo, kuyamkele i bill.
I support the bill.
Eh, tizo banestrelo endinaso, kuti ndongesa izi ndo, esisbonayo kuti, senga kwazo kustune tisanjenga bandu, aba kokele ama bandla.
I want to raise, raise some issues that I can add, which I think might assist us as people who are leading some congregations.
Eh, pa kwa what fifteen, eh, kulonyake, sibe abantuana aba cha tro bayebazthoma, bazgulala ngeni drugs.
At what fifteen, only in this year, we have three incidents of suicide, children who hang themselves up due to influence of drugs.
Eh, oko esbini, tizo banestrelo apa kusocial development, kuti, asabensani naatisi zingo onzo, kuti asne dise, ukubana kulumtiri imbi, we food parcels, zikuchoa, ziniguwa abantu, abase watin, o council, ne what committee, ukuti baykwalaselo kuti, baz groupes, beke, kubanda aba kokele ikawe, because abantu aba kokele ikawe, ngaba abantu aba notanduva, aba bazyo abantu, aba tupeklere banla.
And also to the Department of Social Development, I want to make a request that when the issues of the food parcel that are being handed over to councilors to give out, they should also consider making use of their religious leaders, because they are leading people and they do have vast knowledge as to who are the poor families who require those food parcels.
Eh, oklandela, ndizo trelu kuti, eh, msoocial development, dasne de, eh, si, si zeska wes andale association, ukuti asenzele i NPO, abantu aba ba kokele ikawe, ikawe za bazkokele ngeni NPO, ukwenzulu kuti bazkuazu trela kuzi ndo, ezikuchoa uchulment.
And also I would want to ask the social development to assist us as the associations that are leading congregations, that we should be, they should assist us in forming an NPO, so that all of these associations that are leading congregations belongs to an NPO in order for them to can, have access from the government funding.
Okokabela, eh, tizo trela ukuti, o social development, payaka what fifteen, seltingu nayto les shelters, ukuti, uba uko noba kona i shelter ezkoyo paya, and then kutatwa bandu kui community, ukuti bangetise, waba bandu nasabawa na ukuti bazinga ke kui community, naatisi kwasuku, yanjenga befundisa, siongetisa, engos.
And also would love to ask the social development to establish some centers in our areas where children who are having problems are taken to, and we as the church leaders will be also available to assist where we can, to assist in these centers. Thank you.
Eh, tala uzbulisela, kui parlamenta yetu ekaya, kuya lapanamxandre.
Greetings to our members of parliament who are present here today.
Onontalontre, yonke, wonge umdola pangapakati ngiamoli sektenije.
Our social workers and everybody present here, greet you this morning.
Ipili, yetu, si, ipi, ipi, lepili si, sibwe, nde amke.
The bill presented before us, I support.
Dine ndawana, nje ezimbaluana, ndifuna uke ndivele uzo.
There are some few issues that I want to touch.
Eh, ben ditela, ndoba na, tingu fiki swapo ma, ostuka kwa what forty-nine, Ndevan.
I am fiki swapo ma from what forty-nine, Ndevan Village.
Ndevan asnengaki na abantuana, inaki inji, sitala onontalontre, abaza utu bene office, pahakache lalin, bangafunya nakuute, onontalontre, klabefuma, klabefuma.
At our township at Ndevan, we have a problem with our children. We request that we should have social workers who would visit us and deal with those children, so that we should find way of resolving the challenge with these children.
Sina abantuana aba ne anger issues. Esenzwa, esenzwa, ukuswele kwa bazalabo, ngoku ka kwa ngoba, ilali yetu isto, isino abo, munko bonje.
We have children who have anger issues resulting from the brutal manner their parents have been murdered in their presence, because our area or township or village is very, very dangerous or violent.
Aba abantuana, ke ba funa uba bade nestations, abazpuma nayo, onontalontre, abakwazengu kuspuma nango, ba galopineke bakweli, bayo chopaya, landa onontalontre, batala koyo, ibe landa, inomka ama, bade abazali, benge namali.
These children require some counseling sessions with social workers, but they can't afford the transport fare to go to the places where the social workers are found, because their parents can't afford to have bus fare for them.
Pa elalin, ukoi isikolo, zine, zine cottage, debu no banja, nganonontalontre, kabenoziswa, ba fa koko zascol, cottage, iskolonga sinye, koba esas, ndo, esas, ndo, zibanga umsi ngaba banduani, na ngoba zascolwen, yanze kalando, kantige ngoku kulula ngoba, isocial workers of mania kwa lapakuchan.
In the village where we are staying at Ndevan, we have cottages at the schools. Can they, maybe the social workers be accommodated in those cottages where they can consult the children or have session with the children during school, eh, in those premises? Because the children are at school, these anger issues sometimes erupt at school or during school hours. So if those cottages can be put into good use, accommodate social workers who can transport, travel from wherever their offices are to the cottages and attend these children.
Ukongo kunendwe, nje yo bulala na kaba banduana, apa eskolwen, kubaga lo, mna ke kanti itinga, ndondichi, uchulmente wetu, what's uta, i, 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 is security, zasikolo, abantuana ba shabana, ngobe eskolwen, wenzeki zindo, no go, umso, kuchmasna uyebukhalale ngolcho bo, stela uchulmente, ange neleli, abu isele, is security, eskolwen, eszautong, is, 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 abantuana, kapakati.
Another issue that's happening in our schools, children are getting them, are getting involved in sexual activities, minor children, in school premises, and some children are stepping one another in school premises. I think the fault that was done is removing the securities guards at the schools by the government. That was a very big mistake that the government has did by removing those securities. I think they should bring them back at school.
Na le ke yo bana abantuana ba kbefundisa eskolwen, kubu yokuzo ma kewazin, ma genze, i homework i abantuana. Abantuana, ba pelebe so, yu kuya eskolwen kaba benge nayo, inansika, kwa lo, uinfundo ya namxandre, imesu, imesu namxandre, arithmetik, so utinasasundi arithmetik, apa kwi mesu, utinasiko, abantuana ba uyane, la mesu, ngoba funu wenzewandje, mna dimlo ma kudundingu, yadi sialabo, mama abo, ulo popile, utata abo, ulo wapupayo, akwanda onza ba tumela koyo, kwamsa abantuana, kofunebepe, eskolwen ba yoiika, sitala noko ma kesnedi sweg, noba kungeki kina inlen.
Another issue that is a big challenge is the fact that we are expected to assist our children with their homeworks. During our time, we did arithmetic, but our children are doing mathematics, which is very different from what I as a parent understands. So now if you can't, in a position of assisting the children with doing homeworks, they refuse to go to school, they are afraid going to school. And it should be also understood that the people who are staying with these children are the grandmothers. Their parents, maybe at times they have passed on, the mother is no more, the father is no more. I as a grandmother now can't assist the child who is being taught mathematics whilst I did arithmetic.
Okokabela, ke ngobidiwa, enza, enza witzela, ukua abantuana abolu kayo, ngoku, abanga banduana, abangi na bazali, ukua abantuana eskolwen aba fundayo, abantuana aba ngi na bazali, i uniform, ubanzi, abandana ba baifumani, kantigala, uchulmentede kate na yu inda uba ngeti sayo, abantuana aba ngi na bandu, ba, bana isocial workers ikona pa eskolwen, sisa ba bo, na banduana bazha dekle, na bazali eskolwen benge a changa, kubaga banduana bazha labotwa, akoba bazali, sitala uchulmente ange, nenle blonda.
There are also children who need to go for initiation, and also children who attend school and don't have school uniform. Those who go to initiation, they are, many a times, they are orphans, they, they, they can't afford themselves to, to pay for the resources they need for going for initiation, or even the uniform. In the olden days, we knew to have, we used to have a way of assisting those children who don't have school uniform at schools. I really assist, or request that the government should assist or get involved in those kind of children.
Ma ndizbulsele, zingost, ngu ayanda Mapongo, ma state, dipuma what twenty-five, e pakamisa ekon.
Greetings, eh, this morning, eh, I'm Ayanda Mapongo, from, e pakamisa, from Pakamisa and King Williamstown.
Pakamisa, what twenty-five?
What twenty-five.
Eh, okokala, mama tizo kolesis.
I'll be brief. Eh, o clause, three.
Tia kela betunama, nze, ngeni ndizami, anikwa mxtamunu, kubdechakala kwam, eskose, nukanesngis, nisamu, ngani mxtam, kuko yekela gamali tepa, right to privacy and information. Sinden nga, kiti, tina bandu ba myama betun, uyakubanga umdana, nde, yoka ni, nde time, uzbomba, umtalo nendo yak, no kwazos pumelo zakel. Most abantuana be, aban, like, both sister beetuna beetu, basala no ma kulenzin, tinakesala koto ru, ngani, i, 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 beliku mbeliwa, neshali no. When it comes to right to privacy, sina banduana ngumse kela ba pe grant, abantuana ba bena twelve years, undana, uyazazo pe grant, funima, funotenki funu. As setange right to privacy, funotenki funu, asitange right to privacy, yavneka, story ge len, this cell phone zabazu tengayo, i content e payana ekorite, ike ngokulomdana, uza iniqually access to privacy. Nikafana mxtambi, uza desenza ndoni payan.
Eh, on clause three, there's something that is said about right to privacy and protection. Eh, you must understand that most of us as a black community, some of us, you...
Una uyagundima ye crash.
Secondly, I want to touch the issue of the crashes.
Tia kela, good people, we have abantu who are teaching and mentoring these kids, kwez crashes. Some of these people, siba baz, abakwazu, u, 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 manage it, tempayabo, abanye, abekorite, even around the society, benzisindosirongo. Tito libuz, the people aba, aba chekisha yo aba bandu, before the funding come, because I know, to apply for the crash, first of all, ba jonga ma paper, in constitution yako, yonge ngelala ma paper, but before a funding, please guys, abantu can make sure, neba screening abantu, because abantuana beetu, are being mentored, ngabantu, ebenga, aba, aba mentorish, or ba tetongabo, besi baninga, tavo zaba tala, wazaba nja.
Eh, the other issue I have is the people who are managing or who are looking after our children in these crashes. Eh, some, some of these people can't even manage to control their own temper. I wish that there should be a process of screening them before they can be allowed to deal with our children, because some of the children become violent because of the kind of people who are, they are mentors at these crashes.
And also, dine warri, engeko, human settlement, if you can look at its structures, mna ndikulele Katka, ukuloka me Katka, i crash, bisokonesten, that's the kind of crash that I know, but i question this, wena isama zink. Betuna i environment, apo umdana afunde la koyo, akule la koyo, it, 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 it gives them a picture of what kind of life, as I pillakamta. We need to get rid of ufanda i crash, zengenge. I'm sorry, people, but you got to, you need to build a relationship in human settlement, make sure, ubeka mapagala, esindo, at least, oza, taibona, ubo umdana, kuta zegile, esee, ndu, unawe upayana, ummzalo aku, ushe gendlin, uyazomdana musafe, es crashes amazing, zinombani, titinga, ke, izinga, nombani, asibani.
The other issue is the structures. I wish that the Department of Human Settlement was also part of this delegation, because I'm coming from Katka, that Katka, if you talk crash, that must be a formal structure that should be built before somebody can use that structure as a crash. But nowadays, I see structures of zinc, and that zinc, you also use electricity, that to me is a very dangerous combination. I just wish that the Department of Human Settlement can assist our people with the bungalows which can be used as the structure to house a crash, because the kind of structure you raise your kid in, that also determines what kind of life the child should live.
And lastly, I raised this point at some, somewhere in 2019. Department of Social Development, you need to do your job properly, betun, stop funding ghost crash. This is not new, you know it, there are crashes that are getting funded, but they have everything, they have the kids, they have everything, they are getting, but you, you, you won't see the crash. You need to get rid of that, because there are people, communities, who need that money and those resources. And I, I like, I, I'm struggling to understand, because I'm sure, before the funding comes, there is someone who must, who, that you sent, to go there and check that structure, is it proper? Is it conducive for the kids? Thanks.
Okokabela, ke tali sebele, Department of Social Development, ma i pes, ukutlaula, i crash, ezinga, ezinga koyo, is pork, oze, crash, kuba inkaso mali lena, i kuchwayo, iba kwa abantu ba itingayo, yandige, mna ditu, kuti, kala pambaki, kucha inkaso mali, melba, ba kumdua ambayo, ayegui, crash, ibonbi kona, abone na banduana, nukuti meko yayo, iklungele na, ba inga, sekenzisa la, ukulse la banduana beet, engos.
I support the bill. I support the bill. Thanks.
Ndabulisakui members of parliament.
Greetings to the honorable members of parliament.
Ndabulisak, ubashali.
The committee members.
Ika malam dumlinda, Fonde.
I'm Linda Fonde.
A community development worker yako what one. Eh, i colleagues from Isbandi, sisi kazi, sisi bekile, indo itibenene, ne center for i dropouts payana, namgen dia, 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 pinda nde ongeza. Na Lendo, is telo esinaso, kaba banduana be foster grant, is pelela kui eighteen years, ben ditela na, o twenty-two years.
Okay, eh, as my colleagues from Isbandi already alluded to the issue of the centers for dropouts, I also reiterate that, eh, also, we also mentioned, they also mentioned the issue of the age limit for foster care grant, eh, of eighteen years. I move that it should be at least be beyond eighteen, up to age twenty-two.
Nde ayi ngoma, mama kakulifora, because sakesazo kalapa ngosasa, wa pfu pi ebantwi, ngoku ndizo kalango social development.
I applaud this kind of a forum, because previously we had a concern or complaint about Sasa, and Sasa came to the people, and now I want to raise concerns or complaints about social development.
Tata ben ditela, mna imonitoring, kakulu, kula ndi maye foster parents.
Okay.
Ben ditela monitoring from Department of Social Development.
I would request that social development should strengthen the monitoring on foster parenting.
Banengaki kosi social worker ba, esisabinsana, na botina CTW use, bongabina transport to do imonitoring.
Our social workers have a transport problem, those who are working with us as CTWs, over doing the monitoring. Those who are working with us as CTWs over doing the monitoring. Because you'll find out a father is receiving a foster care grant for a child who is not even staying with. Because the child maybe at times has lost a mom and now the father would take advantage of that because he's a parent to that child and still staying with other children. Also, I have a problem with the issue of these reviews that are done by social workers at schools. Because a principal at times would sign on behalf of the parent. Whilst the parent is not there when the social worker goes to school, when doing the review. I support the bill. Thank you. Greetings to our leaders. I'm Luanda Luciz. Working for the Child and Youth Forum.
Youth Care.
Youth Care Centers.
Yes.
There are just three issues that I want to raise.
Then, it's a challenge here now, getting between 18 to 21 years.
We have a challenge of the age of 18 to 21 years. Because the act goes up to 18.
Then after that, lamdanu finalbiya puma kwa CYCC.
And after that, the child has to leave the CYCC. They were saying that the issue of 18 to 21 years is still being processed. I don't know how far it is. But currently, I have a child who's reached the age of 18, who's doing very well and doing metric and ready for tertiary. But that child now need to go for initiation. When I go and check their home where the child was taken from, that home has not changed, is still not conducive for this child or to accommodate this child.
Now, omdana ngenkwe kufunuko luka, I ask omdana, Fandin, kufunuko luka, oyayaza screeni matoda, aba stenabandoa. How did we do this thing? As na i postpone analendo kwa luka, keslungsele eskolokal.
Now, the challenge we are having, I have spoken to the boy that he understands that we at the center, we are only keeping children, we don't keep men. So I even suggested to him to postpone the issue of going for initiation. But this boy is under peer pressure, doesn't want to listen, he does want to, he wants to go for initiation. And he even indicated that if he can be released now, he cannot fit well at his home before initiation.
Yes.
The decision we have taken is that we are going to take him for initiation, to initiation school. After, as soon as he finishes exams, we take him there too. After he finished that process, I bring him back, get him clothed, the manner he's supposed to be clothed after initiation, and then take him back to his home.
Fine. The second thing is, na yosi ile forum, a question about one about the orphans.
The second challenge we have at this forum is for the children who are orphans. Now that we have these children who are orphans, I request that as other, our leaders who are in our areas, the leaders we have, or even the Department of Social Development, to have a way of assisting those children who are orphans in acquiring homes through the Department of Social Development. They should, they should have a process of assisting those children to have homes because they don't have homes.
Yes. Now, kuku lomtini we, we alternative care, the funding of alternative care. That e uniformity in terms of the funding, I find, yeah, the South Africa. Omdana ose kapan, omdana ose kauti, omdana ose Eastern Cape, in terms of the funding, I find. Si kala e uniformity, because there's no difference between omdana ose kapan, omdana ose Limbombe.
The other issue is the issue of the funding of the alternative care. We request that there should be a uniformity kind of assistance that all of us in, all over the country would get. Because we've discovered that the kind of funding we get in the Eastern Cape is different from the funding that they get in the Western Cape or even in Gauteng Province. So I request that that should be addressed by make it uniformal, the issue of funding.
Yes. Now, the question, a present in dibonle, in wena, e rolgamas pal. Municipality, quest NGO, but NGO, most of this, this, Y C C, most yes. You will find, obana, umas pal in Jelasaki Shangaio, e funding in terms of services. Eya funa iba koni, ndeleba, communication, no mas pal. In terms of the services, for instance, as we speak, pagum, tineja leluk over hundred thousand. We need to pay social need because of the subsidy. I say, koi ndo e question, e funding, e kutwa masiya, ambesi fundraiser outside, basu, kukalwa ne covid.
And also the role of the municipality. There should be a way that municipality deals with the NPOs or NGOs as to how they are paying. Because we have a big debt in terms of the rates, we don't get, we don't generate fund. We get fund through subsidy. So I wish that there should be a way of how to deal with the municipality. Or there should be a way that the municipality deals with these, the NPOs or the NGOs.
Fine.
And also, lastly, there's the issue of this covid attack. South Africa has been attacked by the covid in a big way. Because we lost many human lives, some of them close to our house, our colleagues or family members on everybody in general. Now, the government or the kind of, the number limit in terms of funding has been cut. For instance, I'm catering for 75 children, but now they have cut the number to 70. They are providing nothing to assist me in terms of how I cater this additional five. Thank you, Chairperson, I support the bill and thank you so much. Greetings to honourable leaders, the members of parliament and everybody present here. I'm Nom Sangam Tieni from Ward 17. I'm very happy with this visit by parliament in the Pafalo City. Maybe our complaints about our children will be heard. I want to talk about the crises, the structures of the crisis. In the area where I'm staying, there are women who are trying to groom or develop our children by creating crises. But the kind of structures they have are informal structures which do not even have an electricity or even a washing facilities. I have been watching and I could see the people from social development and some of the words I would not be proper, I would not pronounce them properly because I'm not educated. But at least I've been watching. The government officials do visit these crises in my area, especially the one close to me. This informal structure, when they leave, they'll promise that they are going to do something. But up until now, there's no progress. Some of the children fall ill in these circumstances they are living under because the structures are not in good condition. It is a good idea to have a way of developing of the children, but the structures are not conducive. We, as much as we are uneducated, but we do intend to let our children get educated. I have a child, a child who is doing a grade 12, which was standard 10 in my time. They are given phones at school and we don't have the necessary resources to assist in this kind of education that they are getting. At time the child, I need to give a bus fare to travel to Mthanzane to where the child can get the resources to be able to get the education that she needs to access through the phone. We also need a clinic where we are staying. If you go to the place where you need to get some treatment, you don't get the necessary attention you deserve. And there was an incident that took place where a child passed on on the bench while waiting to be attended. We need a clinic in the area where I'm staying. We also need you to assist us in getting some halls where our children can be involved in recreational activities to stay away from the drug activities or drug abuse. Lastly. Lastly, I want to request that the mobile vehicle that used to be, the mobile home affairs services that used to be brought in our area, I really wish that could be revived because we need those services. And there are children who lost their mother and they are staying with a granny. But somebody else is collecting this, their grant, the money for the granny and also the money for these kids. The granny don't have even a place to stay. But the person who is receiving the money doesn't play a role in taking care of the granny together with the children who are the owners of the money which is received by somebody else. I really wish that the government can have a way of monitoring them, assisting the elderly. The elderly are homeless. They need to be accommodated with the structures that can house them. Even if they are provided with those structures, when you walk, you feel the floor is shaking. At least that's something, I really wish that they can be assisted. Thank you. Let me stand on my feet because I can see the number of people is being reduced behind you, people are leaving. Because if you don't excuse them, they'll end up excusing themselves. We'll now hand over to the officials from Social Development. We'll ask you ladies to wait and hear what will they suggest or advise.
Alright. Kunike Department.
Let me greet the honourable members of the Portfolio Committee for Social Development. The officials from the Department of Social Development.
All the people that are coming from Pafalo City Metropolitan Municipality.
Honourable Chair, I need to clarify that I am from the National Department of Social Development. I am the Acting Chief Director for Child Protection.
That is from the National Department. I applaud you.
Eh, abase pondwe, the chair, they will join us shortly because they were busy with quality assurance as they are busy trying to process, you know, the funding and payment of organisations, but have indicated that they are needed because there are specific questions that they need to answer.
Abase benzi balapa yepondwe nige bazas ba nagani kunyana atibunge kuteala zikona nje izinto abasa zita bezelayo tibatlale nendo ba nabo funegu babi ngayele nyadenjakanesoko ba kukona emibuzo eh chongene ngomo nogwenzeka apa yepondwe.
Eh, honourable chair, I have taken note of the questions and from my recording, I've recorded about twenty-six, which I'm making a commitment that I will definitely write to the HOD for follow-ups on the specific cases that needs follow-up.
Sichlalo, oshonapekile ndiwufumele nditi, tisikapele zonge izparamiso, diyawakapele nemibuzo epagniswa apale ndawu, kwaye ndiwakwalele, dinetemba lo ubage tisa wuyela pansi nixale pansi, ditwangese inngayelu ndawu nditumele paya kuintro kesebe.
Allow me, honourable chair, just to talk to the first case where one of the speakers indicated about a seven-year-old and ten-year-olds that were sexually abused who are actually in temporarily safe care.
Mandite tenje sichlalo ndiwufumele ukona istete besetenga bantu anak abanemi nyaga omni uni nyaga estenda omni mini nyaga elishumi abate bapato kadala lango beson, difunangi ubandi tetende pawo lema lunga nalumtengba opahamisale.
In terms of the provisions of the current legislation, that is the existing Children's Act thirty-eight two thousand and five, not the amendment bill.
Ngogomte tuage okoyo lo siukwara zeleyo o chongene nabantu anak.
Children in temporarily safe care, they cannot stay there more than six months because temporarily placement, it is temporary because children's court proceedings needs to be finalised so that the child can either be in a child in youth care centre or in foster care, or if the child cannot be reunified, the child abuysale into a bekuakui adoption.
Ngogomte tuage lo payaga kushtemla zawu ikona ndawu eti umdwanakagavumele kanga wama kaxale ngapesu kwenya ngaezindanda tu. Ubanga bage umdana usheli lade lo ajikulelo tlaysha akona amazu ekfunegu umdana ajikulisi leku okonukuzakwazu umtengi buakwa kwa yeme koyake ibe nukwalasale wakona. Okuke kusemte twenilo sichongene nawanamxalshu.
Omnye umbuzo ububuzi where it's about the exit plan for children that are in alternative care, especially those that are reaching the age of eighteen.
Ukona ge umbuzo fe lema lunga neswangezwa esikoyo esichongene nabantu anak abate bafigalele wakimi nyaga elishumi lanspo zoba tla umdanefigalele wakimi nyaga eti nina inkobo eyenzeka ekfunegu ilande lo tla ekfunegu epumile kuisistimjenwogo efigale wakimi nyaga ei eighteen.
In the current amendment, we have made provision.
Zikona kithkwenielelo kulumte tolo ushonyolayo setangao.
But I also want to indicate that there's currently guidelines that are in place which we call independent living programmes, which is actually meant to assist and support the children that are exiting, you know, alternative care, whether they are in foster care or in the children's home, for those children to actually, from admission point of view, already their permanency planning starts with structured programmes where even the life skills programme, including, you know, the scaling up in relation to technical skills that the child might need, so that such child, when he or she exits alternative care, that child can actually have a better life. That provision is there in terms of the guidelines, which requires us as the department to intensify the education and the rollout of those guidelines in our alternative care facilities.
Zikona ge iswangezwa enoktada ngokuba sisikokele esitieke sa ukwala zela kanya abantu anakabo bazawade bapumjenwogo nditete tla defigale wakimi nyaga ei eighteen nogwenzeka ndonana. Zikona ge inkobo esikoyo isabe elisparamisale ngogomte tolo kuba abanana ngalibumile funegu ba tunyeluka wanyama kaya okanya ba tunyelukuma ziko apa baba fumane kona mxta muthla etreshu ba fumane izakono nogwenzelba bakwa zukuzpilala ikabeli. Uholumende ge zikona ge iswangezwa esikoyo zo kchonga nagani nemeku esloloshop.
As part of that independent living programmes, we're also looking at partnering with other departments, especially human settlement.
Gulinku guesinayo sichongewa kona nokuba sisebe disane namanyama sebe ukchonga na nemfuno zo umdana umzegelo nje ngesebe eli lezo kxalisoa olundu.
Eh, because these children, really they do not have homes that they can go back to, therefore they need to be prioritised in terms of housing.
Enyane swene abanana abanawa amakaya abanutetla depumile gulinkobo bafumile ku hiyalondo ekisita babisana ne sebe eli lezo kxalisoa olundu konkuzo bakwa zubabantu anak bafumane lue amakaya asisitla.
Eh, utata from word fourteen.
A gentleman from one fourteen.
Made an indication of a child that needs to go for initiation.
Ute tenge umdana gofuna uwiyagu ayehukulalu.
Eh, I think it's important that the province, actually the BCM will have to really follow up and see what kind of support working with SASSA that child can receive.
Paramisando bano woge umaspara losi ku melba ikona indima ayajale funegu alandele leobange ipiena umnedo olonoti lunige zo umdana funegu bege sutwen.
Eh, in relation to access to documentation, especially. Where fathers are unable to register their children.
Ta abasali ke abanguo tata benga kwasu ukupaliswa abanana babo kuzo bafumane umzegelo istrinsik zo kuzalo.
I think the current judgement that we have just received in relation to this registration will really help us to solve this problem.
Di klenobagi isitibo isukebe sifumele yo esukengunjen sa ukwazu kufne dagaku luku zo mulula lenaki ya ababa tata funegu be palise abanana laba fumane umzegelo istrinsik zo ezokza.
Kutengeka ukuti sifundi say about these judgements so that abantu bakuti bakwazu kuti unga tobalufumane kobazikona i provisions, koto sia bonu kuti kutengeka ulwazi.
Eh, I think it is our role or it is our duty to make sure that we educate our people in respect of the judgements that are coming from the courts because there is assistance that relates to the judgements. So people must be educated about the judgements so that they can get fully equipped about how to deal with several cases that they are coming across.
Another question that came, I think I will need clarity on that. It was around. It was around the court, the five-year.
Sorry, can you, can you expand on the issue of judgement because you did say there is a judgement, but you never said the judgement is about one, two, three.
Awana wutage selenje malo ngage nesuke wosengunjuteta ngaso kuba utetenge ngaso pawo lesen ngaso awas nega ingo baka ezzevecho ba sisikuwebo esas para dikwekala eli para dukwa bana bani sazezatini spum.
Thank you, honourable member. It is about allowing fathers to register the children in the absence of their mothers.
Sisikuwebo esimalunga nogufumele otata ubabakwazu ukupaliswa abanana babo noguba umzali ungama agako.
Eh, honourable member and also the provincial department, especially BCM, I think I will share that judgement so that there could be no knowledge around it.
Ndiklenobagi amakosa asuka apa isebene nomasana ala namakosa kamaspara tisa wutindabela nenawo ngale ngesuke wosengunji nogwenzelba babenulwaz ngaso.
Eh, anye inda ubiya kapazileka i tracing ye paternal, sorry, ye maternal family.
Another area that was covered was the issue of tracing paternal families.
Eh, yenzelondo kwa kona kubenzima ukuti kukuregistarishwe abantu anakodada.
That makes it very difficult for the fathers to be able to register their children.
The judgement again that I've made reference to will assist us with that.
Isuke wosengunjaga nasoge si kapazileka kona umbandela lolitetangao.
Another question that was raised.
Omnyo umbuzo yowapahamiswa ngabaxali.
Eh, ngabantu anak abati babene ngaki ngokwase ngondweni. Many children with mental health problems.
Mendally challenged.
And let me cite again that we had as the Department of Social Development, Department of Education and Department of Health, we've got a judgement against these three departments.
Zikona ge isuke wosuka inkunjen esimalunga nalama sebe isabe lezo puchiso olundu isabe lezimfundo ne sebe lezimbilo.
And the judgement again was about inadequate provision of services to children with mental health programmes by these three departments.
Mongopala kwenkonzo esniwa abantu anak esuka kulama sebe matatu ditetenga.
To be specific, social development, it was about inadequate provision of facilities, especially for children that have got, let me call it, severe profound disruptive behaviour disorder.
Eh, tla nditetake ngala ma sebe.
Ifundika ngetakwa kona.
Lezo puchiso lolundu. Kabantu anak abati babene ngaki ezitile ezipati imegu esnagalekanga ekxaline.
Eh, ifundigenzo umzegelo ngabantu anak bati babula lindaga, bati sebapule i buildings, it's uncontrollable behaviour.
For an example, I'm referring to children who are having that uncontrollable behaviour, bad tendencies like of killing birds.
Cats.
Of destroy, cats, I'm sorry, of destroying property. So that situation is the truth that I'm referring to.
So we are currently supporting provinces to make sure that in terms of those facilities, at least a province try to get one facility.
Siyawatasa ge ama sebe konkuzi akwas kuti afumane noba mxta ibilizi kwele nogwenzelba likwazu ukuti lichonga ne nemeku esloloshop.
There was a judgement, we called Nawongo judgement, which increased funding for child in youth care centres.
Nikona ge nesuke wosengunjaga epumile malu esichongene kanya nama ziko achongene achongene noguktenkwa yini nokxala kwa kabantu anak abatbatu newe foritgeswa elitini.
Eh, i respond again ngokugula question ka tatawasi ma, let me correctly get the name. Masisake Child in Youth Care Centre.
I am responding to the issue that was raised by a gentleman from Masisake Healthcare Centre.
Child in Youth Care Centre.
Child in Youth Care Centre, I'm sorry.
Who made reference that there's no uniformity in funding in terms of unit cost in child in youth care centres.
Abuko sabelo silingana yo ta kunike zwa umnedo kulama ziko achongene nabantu anak kwa mapondo umzegel.
Actually, the Nawongo judgement is for all services, you know, welfare services, but we prioritise child in youth care centres as the national office because of this court order on children with severe and profound.
Esisikuwebo ge sengunjaga si sebenza kuonke amazi kogoda ge sie sakwalasela ngukukotwa elis, elis, elisikodi tiyata ngalo elichongene nesmegu nogwaznagalekanga ekxaline.
Honourable chair and honourable members of the portfolio committee.
Namalungu wama nawo asuka gekomi di.
Nakubaxali base Bafalo City.
And also the community of Bafalo City.
The unit cost for child in youth care centres was increased to be standardised to be four thousand per child per month.
Tla uloke iye yu nyusuage eti inike zelue kulama ziko achongene nabantu anak ayoma kui mali ei four thousand kenyaga umdwanaga mmye.
As national, we are monitoring how provinces are implementing the Nawongo judgement including the issue of this unit cost.
Sili sebeke elikasuelonge sibeke ilisoga kulu apa kuma pondo uchonga iba ingaba ayao lande layao stebenza ngoku ukona eh esisikuwebo sesuke engunjen malunga nesncha ulos tse watwa nogomasniwke zocho kui mali ei four thousand umdana ngamnye.
We still noted with concern that not all provinces are actually paying this four thousand unit cost per child.
Sika pele kwaye yastalabisaga kulu fumanza ndoba ayinka oonge amapondo ati alandele lomkwa mukufule kuwa kuba kubadalu ei four thousand umdana ngamnye.
I'm sorry, my laptop just froze, I'm trying to scroll down. So in response to the mental health problems, we are currently as national developing the intersectoral policy that would actually assist the adequate provision of these services to children with mental health problems, especially severe and profound.
Ukona ge omkagongobo osuka apa iseben oza wutige uvarelo umsansa ubapahamiswa ngaba nisikala zoba zikona nogu inkonzo esingani lisio inga kumbi kubantu anak abanu no pazamise kwa ngakumbi abapazamisege ngendwe.
We have noted with concern the issue of child neglect, which we need to intensify our awareness raising through the implementation of our three-six-five days child protection campaign.
Sika pele kwaye yastalabisaga nendo yoba ukona imegu apo kwa abantu anak abati banga katalelo nangona sisi tige ukona omkagokoyo ukutabana funegu bekwalasale wengoku ukoka ngenge tlaysha elikoyo payana omkagokobe sna osilisebe.
And ifunutela kakhona ukuti ama lungu aseklale ni mawaweliliso asemenzane netdepartment in identifying these cases of child neglect so that.
Also appealing to the members of the community to make sure that they are monitoring their communities, they are able to identify the children that are neglected so that they can report those matters to the department so that children can be given the support they deserve.
But most importantly, it's to build the capacity of parents.
Iska kuluke kukukovisa abasali ngisakono esfanyalekle.
Through our parenting programmes that we have in place.
Ikona ge inkobo esichongene nogukosha nogulunga lungisa izakono apa bazali ekoyo nawe ekfunegu sibasile injlebe.
I also noted with concern the delays in terms of the removal of children that are abused into alternative care.
Ndikapele yankalabisaga kulu ukukukwa kwenya wu kususha kabantu anak abaxala kwenya wu abatshaza zwa kuzo bangasusha basiwe kwenya wu esikusalekle yo nogolondo leo yankalabise kakulu mpifungu.
Eh, the BCM will need to really ensure that the provisions of section one twelve, one-ten of the Children's Act is implemented in its entirety.
Uya ufuneke ge umaspara lo Bafalo City ukunisege ndoba isbuonelelo esipaa kuisolo jo one-twelve.
One-ten.
One-ten apa kumtiato lo uyelo yo lisolo ya ekfunegu limilisele lilandelu kukufanele kilayo.
Kobaga lukus section one-ten uti tla ubone umdana otshaza zwa yu funegu lomdana aripotema poliseni o kuisocial development or i child protection organisation so that lomdana are removed immediately ayobe kwa kui kaya i city temporarily safe care whilst awaiting court proceedings.
The clause provides that if one identifies a child who is in a situation where he or she is exposed to abuse, that child must be immediately removed or it must be reported to the law enforcement agencies, it must be reported to the social development, it must also be reported to those entities that are responsible to take care of those children who are affected by abuse in one way or another.
Eh, the case of substance abuse, especially drugs, it came several times.
Nogusake nswage ekwesi yobis okutewapahamiswa apenzin amatresha amatresha.
Umtetu sanao currently, that is the Children's Act thirty-eight of two thousand and five, section forty-six.
Ikandelo le forty-six lomte to wabantu anak ukona ekfunegu lelo esiko esichongene kanya nalomba unendewa wenzza noksinyesokwesi yobis.
Including section one fifty of the Children's Act.
Ngakumbike iisachuko one fifty somte to lol. Children who are using drugs, children that really need protection.
And it provision, we need court order so that the child can actually be forced into rehabilitation. The corner, there is secure care facilities for a bandana that are actually committing crimes, children that are below the age of 18. Honorable Chair, I think some of the issues that, you know, cross cuts with other departments, such as issues of recreational facilities, we will really have to engage other departments, especially with our district development model that we are looking at implementing as the department. Issues related to grants payments, especially for children with disabilities. I need to indicate to Guti, if a disability, we have to give a grant and if a caregiver also receive what we call care dependency grant so that a person can get a grant.
I would like to report that a child who is having a disability is supposed to get grant from social, from SASSA. So now even the parent is supposed to access that help. Otherwise, provision is there for the parent to get the assistance in order to look after the livelihood of a particular child.
Yesterday, we had a meeting with the head of social development around issues of foster care.
A person.
Engos, Chairperson. Une disability, yes. So a bandana, a caregiver, a care dependency grant because a disability. So we have to give up until a bandana, up until age of 18, that care dependency grant. If a bandana is 18, let's say 18 years of age, it translates from that care dependency grant because a bandana eligible will give a disability grant, will give from age of 18 up until 59. That is 60 years, it translates into the old age grant. Okay, thank you, thank you, Chairperson. What I was explaining is, a parent with a child with disability would receive a care dependency grant because she or he is taking care of her child with disability. And then the child would receive, the parent would receive that care dependency grant up until the child reaches the age of 18. When the child then is 18 years, up until the age of
60.
59, meaning now he or she is an adult. That person receives own grant, which is a disability grant. Come the age of 60 years of age, then the person receives the old age grant. So that's how it keeps on changing its shape. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The terminology is not user-friendly to them.
Thank you, Chairperson. Thank you so much. And we have taken note of the issues of monitoring. Especially the placement of children in foster care. Which requires that thorough assessment needs to be done. But we have picked up some gaps in terms of the quality reports because of poor assessments. And some of these gaps have led to misplacement or what is labeled as selling of children because there's not even supervision of the foster placement, including supervision of social workers that are placing children. HOD yesterday indicated that the gaps in supervision. They believe will be corrected by the OSD that now has been implemented in the province.
I would like to appeal to the community of Bafalo City.
We need to especially service provision around foster care.
The issues that we have raised, especially those that relates to foster care.
Child abuse and neglect. Child abuse and neglect. As noted, and this is how intensify our awareness campaigns and get to these communities. Madam Chair, I think this cover a ratio some of the questions, but there was also a question around guardianship in terms of clause 14, which is currently in the current bill. Because we're saying that guardianship must be regarded as inter-country adoption by non-South African. Because we were trying to tighten the gap in terms of seeing people leaving the country, you know, without tightening of laws. Especially the gaps where it would encourage, you know, even trafficking of children. So the reason that clause was put in there to say guardianship, especially by non-South African, it should be regarded as inter-country adoption because certain people would use, you know, that provision because they want to bypass the processes of inter-country adoption. So I just needed to clarify the provision, but Dr. Mabi can add more. He's also from the National Department of Social Development and he's responsible for adoption.
Thank you very much. But there are also issues.
Some of the issues you raised, the issues that we said we should take note down and go and deliberate on it and come back with something conducive or something tangible. I'll give the honorable members time to make some inputs. Some of the issues are issues that we have to take up to the municipality, like the issues of the rates and the electricity that is not there. We cannot respond to that now. We need to meet the municipality and translate, cascade that to the municipality.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. I think my input when I've listened to all the community, sorry, to the community members. I think the biggest problem is the lack of social workers when you listen to the individual problems that was raised in this issue. The other issue that I would like to address also, Chairperson, is the issue of the person that did raise that they must wait five years for birth certificate. This issue and all the other hearings in this province was raised. So we need to bring it to the attention of the Minister of Home Affairs for urgent intervention. And one gentleman did raise the issue of ECDs that receive funding. And when you get to that ECD, that the ECD is not conducive. Or doesn't even exist. The department need to get a monitoring system in place to monitor ECDs. There was another lady that was raised, the issue of, you know, that the ECD don't have or struggle with the basic challenges of water and sanitation. There need to be a really urgent engagement with the municipality because at least they can give these ECDs this basic symbol right to water and sanitation. And the last issue that I would like to touch on is this issue of children being in homes all their life and then at the age of 18, they must leave the homes. There's a need for transitional programs and aftercare centers to look, to ensure that these children at least have stability in their lives so that they can go and live and become independent. It can't be that we've been looking after the children all their lives and that's the only home that they know and then we just throw them for the wolves. Yeah, I think it's true. I just, Chairperson, through you, want to commend the young people that have spoken here and that is involved in social development in our communities. I am just going to say two things, which is, one, constituency offices that are in your province are an extension of parliament. Many issues of service, access to services, access to government programs, you are able to get from your constituency offices. Then the issue of, the issue of children, sick children, and there is no primary care facility close to your community. The community must know this. I'm specifically speaking of the woman that has made this, that has brought it up. Sick children should be given priority at all healthcare service points.
Eh kupinda kubekoi ndaweki akachasala omnyuma maapa yenkonzo sesimbilo umdo ana owa tewapupa eh lestulu nelindele ukuo yewa. Noko aimandanga londo kuinda uzo nyango umdanana ukulayo ulula na ukpinana umdufike kalaknaye. Umeleka ulaselewa oye kala yesa fika kala umdanikula. Agao iswaba duama kaya umichumdan.
Yes, then lastly, I can just ask the, the social development if they must drive like indicated by the direct, the Chief Director for Child Protection, that the whole basket of services that is available to communities. The communities do not know that. They don't know what is the whole basket of services. So I am asking that social development derive the awareness programs as indicated today here in the province so that people can have access to that. Thank you very much for coming. God bless you.
Ndifuna utu bisake uisabelezi enthalo putlesolo enthalo yolu ndu nokba ke ngu director we pondo kanya ukubani pagubo. Kube kweki pulo abanalo. Apo ba ambabefundi sabekrobisa abantu ngu ngendijizu zeze inkoso. Abanozi unetanga zo ulundu abanazo buona belysebe. Bakangelenga tobandabanize abanaluwa zige inkoso kanya unetoba nutfumana kui isabenu putlesolo zulu ndu. Ya kubesi kuti mawenzwe ma pulo jalo bakfundi swa abantu. Engosika kulu kusitina nibela abanamchange engosini sigelele.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. I've got few things to say.
Engosika kulu shalo mnatine ndawana jezimbalo ntsunushkabasi.
The first one is the one that has been raised by a certain gentleman to say stop funding ghost ECDs.
Eh yoka la indawetetuke unumza na apa otu kukoe ispo ko ze ECDs ezifumanana inkasomali.
I'm directing this to the Chief Director of TSD National.
Ndipegisa londo ke kumla ulichikelele kwe sebe kui kazwe lonke.
This means that there is something which is not going right in your department.
Londo itetukuti ke malaulichikelele uikoa nduenga bigakseki sebelago.
I believe that they are raising it because they've saw, they've seen it. They've got proof of that. Can you please do something?
Ndakutila mdebe ipaka misa uyayazla mta tetanga. Uybonile unesekisosa londo. Ya kela lukuto umla ulichikelele akaza mula ndelela londo.
You also when you are answering spoke about the exit plan of people or children who are now at the age of eighteen to say there are programs like independent learning. And when I recall, there is one person who raised the issue of children at the age of eighteen who find them lingering because they are out of the care centers and they don't have places to go. What is it that is being done to such people? I heard about saying the exit plan. But if people are still lingering outside, what is it that you have as the department to make sure that those people are somewhere taken care of? Because when they are out, it means that independent learning didn't do anything to them. Is there any plan for that?
Ndivileke umla ulichikelele kausiti isabeli neswangu so otikausbeza i exit plan iswangu so. So ulunsellela lumbu makapume uya puma welzigongo kuwiosmela ngapantle. Kotwa kukwabanda basena umseke basenzi lomseke lo umdanakutwa uyabula yeh highway upuma paya ukuchiwe kuisiko kubame mimi ya keli shumenespozo. Uhlalelati ni ngaba induweni eswangu so sile ulunsellela ukumdojalo. Kasela umdespa ekume kwenjalulu uyabula ipa estratwene selitulisi le uke kule nko bo ke yeswangu so se exit plan. Indo yeenzwa yu kenga ayeh kasela ukubono uyabule estratwe. Kuya tinge kuti ma ibekona ideense kanga lumbu.
There is another issue that has been raised about children that are coming, are dropping out from schools. The reason being that they fail to get people to assist them at home. I just want to ask if we do not have DICs around here. Because in most cases, children are being assisted by the carers at the drop-in centers. But I never had anybody talking about it. But people keep on saying that they are dropping out because there, there is no one or there is no center that is made in order to assist them.
Eh kobe kumdo kalange deba abantu anabake tuku kubaleki skolo. Bangayeskolu inikarebozo ba induwe ba mama ningayeskolu iniseli ndanga eskolaje. Bakala indoba ayasna banbosngeti sekaya ngayeh homework. Kanga yenza ngayeh homework ankuazu yeskolu in kuanyenyo yuki eskolu in tinge yenza ngayeh homework. Eh londo itetukuti akukoma zigua alunselleluwayo entwenzalo kotake ukwazwa kuko yamasigwa biswanchenge DIC. Ah melba uneta bandua ana ukwenzi homework za benfin kuweskolu. Apa gene ngati ayewokama zigwanzalo kuwenzwa ndingenge entwenzalo kenga kelo shob.
The last, last thing Chair is the issue of our participation as members, as public members. Like, I heard a lot of people raising issues about or concerns about the municipalities or the services that they are getting from their municipalities. As residents from our different communities, I think also we need to play a role in making sure that we assist our own children and also assist our municipality to know exactly what is needed by us. Or assist them when they are on a, on a process of IDPs to participate in order to alert them of the things that you need to see in your places in order to use them.
Kua kona anya indawo endifunukuti masisqala sile nati ndima yeh tu umdu ngamnye njenka bandu abalindele inkoso zika maspal. Sika lazile umaspala kasngeti ngalenana lena 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 kulo ngileke yava kala lunda. Tina senzandoni ukungeti so umaspala ubama kaza zingaki zetu. Tikibisa ke ukuti kakubizo intlanganiso. No masbisongoke ba kanya ukubana koteza intlangzo se IDPs. Ma kuwi uwe kuso sifike sisbeke kona iskalazo zetu. Ukwenze la ba ti ubanga abasiyoi bangaziyoi sisbegile tina. Kadike kuuya kozanintlangzo sisbegisikalazo zetu. Siwa wa ngataya yenu umaspala ubama kaza zizi indo sistinga yu. Ukwenze la bakabeku angisa bayazukuti induwe nebalu ekleyo anythinga yona.
Because the bylaws should be done according to our will or our wishes.
Kuba kimitetuanela ulayo kama spala ifaneli ndoba yenzuwe ngokuinfunuziitu.
Last, the very last thing Chair. I'm from a community, a small community called Tomo, a rural community called Tomo.
Eh kutu wadashtalo kankukumbela ndifela kuinda uesema pantre ini ilali ekbisongoba itomo enka kulu.
Which is under a rural municipality called Greater Giani municipality.
Eh patiko maspala ongu kukuma spala wasisilali.
The issue of taking out children from the streets or from the drug abuse. It also depend on us as parents or as community residents.
Indaba yokususa abantu anabitu kuwa kuinda u sekui indaba yesyubisinesi ndesika funeki yu ebuminba abo ikwa tomegiga kwa kuti tinabashali.
You know, in my area, there are a lot of football clubs.
Pakla ndawalala kuwi umla manisa makayala epole kajway.
To start a football club doesn't need government to come in.
Londo ukusu ufule kalalako le pole kajway.
Government can come later.
Outing indawa umaybenkhulme ndoso uti apa nzo ufule pole kajwayo. Siti balala bano senzela itana le pole kajwayo. Ukholmeda ngene mvaa desazumseke le pole kajwayu kuti na yonandu nina enokonu enotibanza bandua.
But as communities you can start that and you will see that children are out of the street but they are busy keeping themselves busy playing their weekends even in after, if the after hours or after school.
Eh ukholmeda ngenelela mvaa fika bandua anabesalala estratwe nokanya napina ngempela veki nasipume kuweskolu kube kendeva kakekisai.
And by creating those games, you will be taking out children from school or doing something bad that is going to affect them in order to cause them to drop out.
Ngukwenza o koso wasineta bandua na ukuse ba kwa zuma ndokwenza enfenupuma kabiskolu ini. Nokba umdanana uka umfakumdanana kuwencalo ubangelduwa angabina luthuba noba yu ngena kwisyobisi. Okanyaki ngeno ukenga ngendoba makashi eskol.
And above all Chair, I just want to thank everyone who is here who made this activity happen. If you are not here, it means you were to fail, you were to fail in order to amend our bill. Your contribution is going to assist us. Thank you very much and God bless you.
Ukuba kukwenuapa kutetala kulu kakulu kakulu. Ukuba kweniapa kubagunga be kubabene ngakanibekona apa. Londo ibea utetukuti aspumelanga kipulu litu lokba sifumanane izi mvoo. Esnoti strobisengazo lomtetu usitomelo sisa ukumbela yongugu. Siabulela kakulu ngakalelo leno nenjale tena strobisanga yu.
Kanimvu sebetuna uzawa mvu seputi. Astale lupupenduni. Chambupupelenzo sminga yu apa. Simingly sisefikalele egukubeni.
It seems we are at the end of the program.
Kotwa abantu abasafuna nga pakatingenkiziyo bashie inambazazabo. Basiza wazi ngukwe wazi. Bangapinda ba nduendulela tafile bashie inambazazabo. Ukwenze lebezi nyizindo siyakuazu kuti kasinetu base sibuyele na se parlamenta. Siwazu tumunga ezinyizindo ngukuti senggeti sanenabo. Si kangele ku ye ne progress sikuimikrimbi nenuka kaka nshaambi abazitweleyo. Di afunupi nda ndikangele paha kuma mutom eh uba inga apa ikona ilizilo kubela. Anwenela ukulebekisa apa epis eh eh kani apa abantu ni abaze apa ngokoba nika itseba, itseba uyey payakuye angade ehle nokucha. Kotwa nje ngomtu onamava sisi selle senyati esya. Sasikule department ya kwa social development. Sabakwa sport no sitetanga yu siti abantu banuti mavu se amakwe impuna zozonge izindo. Eh, masimni. Eh? Mamjene. Oh, mamjene. Yeah, alright. Whilst mamtomka ngangenge umamuchom, umamuchein ufuna nje na yuxomla kanga. Sizo yayikwaleni uzozolaule lipupa ge sizo.
Okay, ndiaabulela ge. Ndiabulela bashali ba apa eh Islanda. Ndifunu ukutetanga lebe reise ngumama indo ye albinism.
I want to address myself to the issue that has been raised by one of the ladies, the issue of albinism.
Eh mendikela ku social development engoba se sina lo puma pezu lukaku director payas pumakona.
I will grab this opportunity and make use of it. Take advantage of the fact that we have a director from the national office.
Dikela baikala zele lentole ayilungili.
I request that the director should take note of what she raised and rectify it.
Nkowa boonge abantu anabana o amalunge lokunga katasu ikiku tenguwa anina.
Because all children has got equal rights irrespective of who the child is.
So, lento zetetwe apa namchange.
What I've said today.
Sokumbulewa social development.
Thing that has been mentioned today.
Ndikela u, u, u nationali makaza ameno ngoba diva abantu abanize apa bakalazo.
I request that the national office should at least do something because many people have been complaining.
Especially kulenda ole eh ukuti eh onontalo le bakute nabashali.
Especially on the issue of saying that the social workers are very far to the community.
Enzani ikewo lukuti sometimes kubenoguti bayafaga shellala babantu so that ezindo ezibakalaza ngazo apa zugwazu sombulu.
Please make a plan that they should be visited so that the issues that they have raised today should be resolved.
Abantu abaninzeka logo apa bakela u, u, uzizo. Abana nendo yoku tibanga kibela baslandelele apa skon.
Because many of the people who need your assistance don't even afford fare to go to where you are found.
Eh, nditetefuti lelitu banditi. Na apa spumakona eno darankei kuyafana na apa ababoni onontalo.
Even from where, the province where we were, we visited last week, we heard the same complaint that the social workers are not visible.
So, ndikela kuti bashukumisenega ngani baveles bakwazuzu pakat.
Please Director, shake them a little bit so that they should assist their community.
Ndiabulela Chair, bedifunu ulusela kuwi because sauce and spin the symbol ne food.
Thank you, Chairperson. I just wanted to grab, make, take, took advantage of the presence of the of the director. We might not see her again.
Hi Chief Director, siyambana we yongele nklel. As she inge move. Siyambana we siye Nelson Mandela ngukutasuka. So, sinewi really, really were blessed by having you. Though we really miss the district officials and the province. But you have apologized for them and as kuti kanjani uyelo. Uza, uza upendula kanjani kanga venwa kutwanmusi yange. Hi, nditengasimieke kotwa mna Chief Director. It's your responsibility to see where's provinces ukuti these laws and ads and court decisions. Zibenenjela that is cascade wa ngayos down. Abantu basazi because in all provinces you will, we never had a social workers talking about eh the decision of the court was taken on this and that and that. So as she siyambana we please. Masini keke umamutomsi vila ngi apology yenu senilala ngolo shobo ku righti ku wrongo. Ni amfumamucheinuti kanibe visible ebantu ini ngako konke enino kwenza. No ba itransport ayiko because it's always the case is shortage of transport, shortage of social workers. Masike simneke manumamutomsi keka wati.
We'll give over to Mrs. Tom.
Ndiabulela slalo kakulu ngalema klabunika yon.
Thank you so much, Chairperson, for the opportunity that you have given to me.
I tikakiwe nakui tasa indo yuko tusakoba u social development wasepondo inanga biko apa.
I don't find words to explain the shock I'm experiencing for not having the local social development with us.
Yo, ayakaka, ayensi.
The provincial officials.
Nje ngoba oviles salo na malungu e parlamenta. Indoba indo ebese reizo apa ikakulu zizi indo ezicha abantu balapa. Zizi indo ezirresponsibility ka social development walapa ipondo.
As you heard, Chairperson and honourable members, that the issues that has been raised here are issues that are affecting the people of this province. You know, the problems of the people of this province.
Kotwa ke kunjalo balali. Sibonile i amendments ezzi zibeki weyo pamkwe tu. Saya mkeela sasa mkeeli amendments ezzi. Londo itetba kasbuyala kengo kuifuna sipindele kuuso ke sisjongisise. Yebon sikawele sile mosuzjongezizi indongo xilapa. But kasbuyalemva singa fiki silelepa elpepa. But kesitbaneni singa makumkhwana siko sibonisa ne indoba induetile because be kutio kotwa isavuli winyoba yoba singapinda sifake indo sismonayo. Enva koba sebe sukile apa.
But as it may, we supported the bill and we have the documents in front of us. I would suggest that as committee members, those documents, we keep them. When we go back, we should meet as groups or individuals. We can meet and go through the document and peruse it. And because we heard that the door is still open. If you find something, we can note it down and send it forward.
Amalungu, eh committee, members of the portfolio committee. You have a mammoth task.
You have a mammoth task.
Kula malunga committee, ne nomsebe zomkuolo emakunwe.
Yours is to ensure that the department delivers.
Okwenu kukutunsekisaka isebeliyakuensa okolifanela baliakuensa.
And sit on their necks.
Nbashali makunwe.
As you have heard here. I mean, things are not easy.
Ubo me uka yezin do azikolula.
There are organizations here that want to assist the department to do their work.
Kuna mi butwa apa yaba nduabas misele ukunati sananesebe.
But the department tends its back on them.
Kotwa kisebe liba libachi ibanikelu mko.
It doesn't even want to listen to them.
Alwamamelo bamamel.
In this two years that I'm a senior citizen. So truly speaking with all the, I can't sit with all the experience that I have. I want to ensure that communities are developed. I want people to develop themselves with the assistance of the department.
Sile ndi ngomdomtala ngoku. Kulame nyakamebe ni dikheli amaava endi nao ebumini. Ankuazu shalange ndinga wasebenzisi. Difunu shalala nduwa sebe nduwa ndingetse abantu ngalamava nao.
I don't want a brass penny from the department.
Andilenge, lindelanga buyakezo kusene.
All I want is to be of service to the people as these organizations that are here.
Konke ndikutenga yo kukwama ndibelu ne to. Kuba ndu ababa lemibu utwa bebetetanga yo apa namchane. But liliapa.
Committee members, the issue of integration.
Eumba ke uwe ndibanisela.
Because if the Department of Social Development here had listened to all these things that were raised here. They would understand that we need an integrated approach.
Ukubanga ba isebelisheleapa lapula pulazonge nduespa kanyiswe yoapa. Beba ikondo kuti sifuna indelia yo ku dibanisela konke kasi kumbulula. Lenka kukanyi kasi kza mukotela ukuyindelia yo sumbulula ez ngakizipaka nisweapa.
You can't have the Department of Social Development in that corner and you have the Department of Education in that corner. The Department of Human Settlement in that corner. We all need to be in one space because our mandate is integrated.
Asikazu banesebe lezo uputlesolo lundu ngapa. Sibe isebeliso mfundo ngapa. Ipine ngapa ibelisebe lezo kshalusha kolundu. Siti ngoku ti songe siti ma ne singa lamasebe. Sibenenjela etibene yo sile kuule ku ye. Sile bo, sile bombeli kine ukuzama ukusombulula ez ngakizolulundu.
When we say that we want these crashes or childcare centers to have norms and standards.
Si nazoke ez krisuketwa ngazo. Koda ke kune mi miselo ni mi kanga, ni mi kanga to. Ekfunegi glande leo onakasi sakiwaka yezimise.
Who is going to ensure that they do meet the norms and standards? Because the social workers don't do that.
Kuba ni ozo kunsekiso ku ti yinda u ekutwa kufuiso sekenswa jenge krisi. Kuka iya kuazi ukumela na ni mi miselo ni mi kanga to. Eh melba ipumele, ipumelela yona ukuzo ifunyelewa iseben.
It's the organizations that are there, where the people are, that can do the work, working with the Department of Social Development.
Yle mi butwa yase kshalini ano yenza londo. Unsekiseka ibiyenza ka kotwa itinga ukuyenza londo isebenzi sana ku ye nesebe.
Chairperson and members of the portfolio committee. I wish you all the best in the difficult work that you're doing.
Shaloo ku ye namalu ngikomi ti ndinigone la konke ukutie kalomsebenzumkulu nituele.
Kotwa indo iti.
Uba ni alazi ibali. Lea aku enga fonuko ngena esangwin. Dasu za itoli kanchani.
But if you know the story of a pig that refused to get into the crawl.
Lendo italen trobo ife. But as the portfolio committee, make sure that the department does what it is supposed to do.
The long and short of it, I mean, it starts from the head and cascaded down.
And don't play with them.
Nengalali gab.
Because the wishes of our people and the aspirations of our people are in their hands. Thank you.
Nengalali nao. Kuba imingwe no ninfunu so nundu uetu sise santinsa winkus.
Mandi ipaka melele nda.
Let me stand for this point.
Unamutom. Uyibeki kaka. Indoba umsebenzi apa ekaya umlinse ufneke winse.
Mrs. Tomma made it clearly that the work in this province is still a huge note.
Abanye be nu basondele paku ye. Basebenze no tata indo anubelela ngazo. Ezba esicho apa pamkuenu indoba. Onua loazi analo ndinitalele moswa sisi selle senyatis. Kamandini amazmos nibuyape istenke iplok. Nimsebenzi ise. Baninzi abantu nalapa pakatu kuenu. Abano mjawo ku ba basebenze. Njenka ababavule ezinda ulama konka. Kotwa a a commove menti kubeka yongo kukubekisalele ku.
I should suggest that people like her, you should not just let go. You can approach her, make a good use of her. I told you, she's a legend. She's got a lot of experience. The knowledge that she carries and the experience she has can assist you to a great deal. Some of you, even those organizations, you can approach her to get the assistance from her experience.
Siza ukwenza njalo unamutom. Ngoku sisa funanje kubelutwazi twazi lutwando. Kasele sipetlaisha silandela i committee inge committee. A kubiko na ye. Engati ashuko maganya kubekho ukhreko kanyukteketisan. Senza lendo siti abantu basitumeyona kasi se parlamenti.
We heard you Mrs. Tom. We will do as you say. We appreciate your words of advice. But when we do our oversight, nobody will be laughing at that stage. There'll be no laughing stock. We don't leave any stone unturned.
Unamutombe tunase yenze yo wange wa itukumbela. Ngoku ukufikalele uku bana. Sikale utata u Bishop asivalalele lomchanga no sikululeke. Inkwangentlaisha inkoso.
Mrs. Tom did everything. I'll only ask the Bishop to do some benediction for us.
Singapaka mage.
We can rise.
Smastale wena tata.
Can you close our eyes?
Baba weto tande kayo. Titlo uetu onamantla onke. Sibulela ku wemtala wesenzoku. Mva kweni namchane. Usfusexrenu twale ku ndau sekuzu. Sazo ngena titlo uetu. Sesiya puma ngoku. Nababantu bakona bo bayapuma. Bati ngosu bayagweni ndau titlo uetu. Mbapamkuabo batwalenjeleni ku ndauzonge bazonge nakuzu. Bakusele njenjeleni ku ndauzonge gamatasha onke. Siabulela ngosu ngoluazu longe sifume ne yoapa. Kina ngosu lo mama unamutom titlo uetu. Nguze ngosi amkuisi indo zonge na ti skakene naso apa kuelpondo. Nguze ngosi sibenomtu restu kwa zukuti. Kasikala asize. Sigele ngosu mtrine utamsamna le wango umdolapa. Ekameni kaya Jesu Christi ngositu. Amen. Zefele ngositu Christi. Bukhalabwenu nganjela na ti kutiboyu Jesu. Amen.
Amen. Engosi, engosi Bishop. Masikululeke ntlanganiso ivaliwe.
Meeting is adjoint.